Chair this meeting, I need to confirm that all members present can hear me, school committee members want to call your name, please respond to the affirmative, Elizabeth Albota.
Unmute. Oh, can she not?
Oh, she might not be able to.
And Mauro.
She heard me earlier.
Mauro and Elizabeth are co-hosts now, so they should be able to unmute.
Okay.
Yes, I can, yes, I can, now I'm mute and I can say yes.
Yay, okay, Mauro Hogan?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths is absent today, and Mary Branley?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative, Colleen Andrade?
Yes.
Brian Haas?
He's muted also.
Now I'm unmuted, Colleen's just having fun, look at her smiling, laughing at all of us.
She's loving this.
It's like a game show.
Check, Caragena.
So much control.
Okay, this open meeting is being conducted remotely as allowed by Chapter Two of Act of 2023, signed into law by Governor Healy on March 29th, 2023. This act continues to exempt certain provisions of the open meeting law regarding remote meetings and public access until March 31st, 2025. The committee is convening via Zoom as posted on the district's website, while an option for remote meetings is being provided as a courtesy. Meeting will not be suspended, or actually, I'll skip that part because it will be suspended if the Zoom goes out. Please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by recording, which is audible to and viewed by the public. If you're going to be recording, raise your hand, okay, seeing none. Meeting materials, there are no meeting materials that are posted for this besides the agenda to follow, there are no public comments for this meeting. And I will go ahead and call the meeting to order, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Mauro Hogan?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera, yes, okay. So thank you all for hopping on a special meeting, we're picking up from where we were. Our conversations in our last meeting was about the planning for the timeline of the Alumni Bleacher Project. Brian, I just want to confirm, and please, you can share that we don't have any updated information or responses to the information yet?
That's correct.
From Huntress, correct?
Both Colliers and Huntress are working on that, but we don't have it yet.
Okay, so I think with that in mind, there are some time-sensitive considerations at the school committee. Brian, I don't know if you want to add, because I know you've been working with Colliers a little bit more.
Yeah, I'd love to, having spoken to them, to Phil, a couple of times today. So one of the things that, and we sort of talked through different scenarios of the question going to the town in spring and/or possibly going in fall? And what would that do to the process between now and either of those dates? And he's worked, obviously, he talks to Chris Huntress, and he works with the Maynard Boards, right? So most recently, he worked with the Planning Board, who gave the indication to, even if the decision is made to move the ask on the, of the town to the fall meet town meeting, move ahead with the Planning Board, do the peer reviews, maintain sort of the progress we're making, and when we get to that point where those things have all been completed, then it sort of goes on pause a little bit, and we can schedule some meetings for the summer to figure out exactly when, you know, for community members to hear, here are the options, here's the cost, et cetera. So that by the time the fall town meeting comes around, people have had an opportunity to vet this and are fully informed.
Okay, so the, the two areas that we, the, the questions that we had were about the scenario planning, it sounds like that's still yet to be provided, but we hope to get something still for that.
We will.
The costs regarding, any additional costs that would be incurred, that would, because of the delay. So there would not need to be additional costs for Planning Board purposes. So it sounds like they wouldn't have to proceed with any of that. Contractual costs, do we have more understanding of, of that? I don't know if, for Colliers and Huntress's contract in particular, I don't know what potential impact that would be.
So it, sort of, back of the envelope with no numbers, it looks like it's almost a wash. They were, you know, his, in doing the numbers, they're looking at like 750 seats, it may reduce a toilet or two, just depending. So there's a little bit of reduction there, but then we pushed the project forward six months, and there's a little bit of inflation there. And if we were expecting them to come to meetings, there'd be a little bit of an increase there over the summer. So there wasn't a whole lot of savings per se, that number wasn't, but I don't have an exact number, so I'll just being forthright. It sounds like it's a very similar number given timing.
But that would be based on the reductions, so if we kept it at the 950 with the additional bathrooms that are needed by code, then the price would go up.
It would probably go up a small amount, depending on what we were asking them to do, in addition to what was in the original scope.
So it would really be like the escalation, which there, there was a formula that he put in for that, and so and then any, any changes to reduce the footprint of the bleachers, which would then trigger a reduction in in the, you know, small, you know, whatever the requirements are for the bathroom facility.
Correct, I think that's an accurate statement.
Okay.
I just asked a question.
Oh yeah, I was just going to go around and see if everyone, but that's okay, I don't know if Beth can even, if she can speak right now, Beth? Or if you, did you have some questions? I guess the question would be, should we be recommending to, with this, what we have right now, to delay to the fall?
I just wanted to ask a logistic question if I could. Any, any concern about, like, I guess my question is the, the contract that we have in place now with Colliers and with Huntress? Do we have to extend that, or is that, are we still in the middle of that contract? Is that going to get altered at all?
I will check on that, I don't know exactly, but that didn't seem to be, in my conversations with Phil this morning, a driving force here. It was really what we were going to be asking of them between what they would have thought was fall, or sorry, spring, and then started, you know, the process, what we were going to ask scope-wise between spring and fall, before the actual, if it passed, what they would do. I think that was a change.
Elizabeth, I don't know if you can hear, if you have any?
Yeah, I can hear you, I got you now.
Okay.
Um, yeah, no, I mean, do we decide to delay or not is the question on the table? And the things people are concerned about is the cost, right, and the size of the bathrooms? And it sounds like, it sounds like no matter what we do, like, if we delay, we're going to incur some cost because of the delay, because of the increase in the cost of these supplies, but we're going to maybe potentially decrease the size of the bleachers and therefore get ourselves back where we are. But I guess the big question is that we don't have, it sounds like, do we, do we know, like, what the community is feeling? And what can we do to make them, you know, understand this better and feel better about this and have enough information? So like, because it sounds like we're not going to do much to save money in this scenario. So then it really comes down to making sure that this, that our community understands what this project is and why it's costing what it's costing. And so then I guess the question is, is that something we need to delay for, or not?
I would say for me, I would feel yes, I think that, you know, ensuring that, I mean, we could end up being in the same, like, the decision is the same, right? The cost might be the same in the fall. I think the time worthwhile to inform and make sure that residents are comfortable, that the due diligence has happened behind the scene and feel like they've been educated on all the nuances that have just come about in the past, you know, month and a half. I think there's value in that, if, and, and maybe that to me is worth, for me, it might be worthwhile for that delay. Just so that people don't feel like this is forced and they have to, like, I really want the public to understand what they're, you know, committing to as a project.
Right, and then I guess the risk involved is that we decide to keep the bleachers the size they are, and then it just, it does end up costing us more. And we don't really know how much more, right? So that's the biggest risk we have if we delay, right? I don't know if there's any, is there any possibility that the state's going to reevaluate the need for that many toilets per? Do we have any sense of, because it's like such a bizarrely large number of toilets, you know?
So, and I am not an expert, but from what I've been hearing from Chris Huntress, and because they're, great question, and that's kind of, those questions always come up.
Right.
The answers that he typically gives are that it's a new code, so they're not inclined to do a variance or change it right away. And I, and truthfully, I don't know that the numbers are that big when you're talking about seating for almost 1,000 people. And I know that it doesn't fill every time, but I think just in their wisdom, if you will, having capacity for enough people to use the facilities in a timely manner.
Yeah, I think it's weird, what's weird about the design for me is that it's a lot of sinks, like, in the men's side especially, it's like, what is it, four facilities?
Yeah, there are.
And then like seven sinks, and I don't know why, and he said something about it being like a COVID response, but that just seems like too much. Why do you need all those sinks? And I wonder if there's some savings that would go along with that if they come down, like, I can see four and four, but four and seven is crazy. You know, so I don't know if there's any valuation there, but I guess anyway, who cares? I don't know if we can answer that, but the, but I guess the question is, like, is it worth the risk of it going up? And I know there are people who are raising things like, should we just have, just like, forget it? And just have the, the, you know, rentals and just kind of deal with that for, for a while, or even permanently? And I mean, I guess those are, I mean, do we, do we need to consider those options more? Do we need to just make sure people understand why we can't consider those options more? You know, I don't know.
So the product, the idea of delaying to wait until the fall would be under, remaining under the current scope of the project, which is bleacher, bathroom, you know, it would not be reevaluating the total project of renting continuously and, and turf, you know, and, and that, because that falls outside of what was already approved by the RFP and the contracts we have. So I think, Brian, we had talked once, once about this before, and I think maybe, you know, this will buy us time to, to, to show like what a phase two might, like, so we're going to get the design plans back and, you know, the end of the month or early, the beginning of March. We haven't really, I think, done a great job, and just because the time, we've been doing a lot to emphasize like what phase two might also look like, right? Of, of looking at, so maybe if we, you know, like, phase two might include a track and, and, you know, some type of field? And, but that would need to be explored, and I don't see that happening, you know, in the, in the interim right now. Beth is, I don't know if anyone else feels, I would, I would be looking at, we were proceeding with the same project, the same scope in the fall. Because we had the application for the CPC, and that's what the application is for, is for that. So we would be able, we would be able to not have to reapply as well. They would be able to take up our application in the fall, but they'll have more information, but the designs will be there to, to inform.
Right.
Yeah, so one of the things I would say is, is in terms of advocating for our students, so building the bleachers, which sort of by default comes with that press box, which then feeds the WAVM programming. So if we want to be able, so that's one of the things that's kind of exciting, is we have WAVM, and they do all these recordings, and they, you know, they do all that. And right now, they've been kind of doing it on the sidelines, on a table under a tent in the rain, which is kind of below where they're at as a program and as students. So having that press box, which is part of this, allows us to host football games, it allows us to host postseason games, it allows all those kids who are part of WAVM to really be part of recording and really learn the nuance of recording and editing and publishing and all of that. So I think it really does fit nicely into the programming that we're so proud of.
Yeah.
And maybe we need to do more of explaining that to people, and they're like, why do you need a press box? I mean, it's, I mean, part of it is MIAA, and we can clarify that pretty easily, you know, with Mike's help. The other part is really educationally and programmatically, it's one of the things that Maynard has and has had, and they're really proud of, and they do a phenomenal job.
Okay, so I guess I just would, if we're going to delay this, I guess I'd want to make sure that we're using the time well, so that people are getting educated in all the things that we are learning as we've gone through this, and that they understand that, that, that this is not arbitrary, this is kind of how things are, we do need new bleachers, and this is how it is. You know, like, I think other things that have come up are things like, do we need to put it back out for bid again? It's something that maybe people have asked, you know, you know, you know, what, what happens if we have these rentals forever? You know, why can't we do this all in one go? And so I guess we'd have to make sure that we're having forums or something to make sure that we're answering all those questions, that people have a real sense of what is going on and why it's going this way. And I guess my last question is, I know this came up in our last meeting, someone asked, is it possible for us to do some of this now and some of it some other time? And I don't know if we ever got a quick answer to that question from our partners.
So the only, so my understanding, and I don't want to speak for Chris, if you will, but the only part that's really optional, if you will, if you build bleachers, right? By code, you have to have restrooms, so that's sort of a given. So there's that 10-foot or 15-foot end of that building for concessions, but it seems short-sighted not to do that. Right, so that, and then, and I think somebody asked him at the last meeting about the press box, have they ever done it? And he said he's done it once, but they came back and added the next year significantly more cost. And I wouldn't think we would be in a position, just given that we have a WAVM program, of not making that part of this project.
Right, and those things, so like, there's no thing that we can say, we can't say, for example, we're putting bleachers up now, and in three months or in six months, we're going to put the, the bathrooms in, and in the meantime, we've got some kind of, you know, agreement that it's fine for us to have porta-potties for our bid. There's nothing that we can do that would save us money in that kind of way.
Not to my understanding, I could certainly pose the questions to Chris. I don't think so, I think it's sort of an all-in-one, you're building this, and then by code you have to build that, I don't know. But, but I'm, certainly I am speaking out of turn.
Yeah.
I do remember that when this came up, that Chris had spoken to the, the building, the plumbing inspector, and then there was a question about that, and then he ended up having to speak to the state, the state inspector. And then we ended up getting something in writing, because it was like, exactly to this question, like, it was like, the, you know, are we sure this is what we need to do? And I think, Brian, maybe I can't remember, I've looked at so many different documents, but we do have that letter from our plumbing inspector that, that says that they have to comply with the code, because that was kind of like, it was new and it was super expensive, the, the change. So I don't know, Beth, if that's, if I can answer your question at all, but I know that that was like behind the scenes, leading up to, like, the lot of the, check this, check that, it went all the way up to the state.
Yeah.
And that could certainly be part of our FAQ, which I think would make sense. Because I think it would answer some of those questions.
I'm positive that that's what, what Chris said, was that we could not do one without the other.
Yeah, I, I know we can't do one without the other in the long term, but I, what I'm asking is, 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 as people are thinking about cost, is there a way to say we're putting in this, and there's an understanding that this is coming, you know, like, kind of like?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that we can do that with the.
I don't know that we can, yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, so like, those are the kinds of things people are asking, so if we're gonna, like, we should make sure we know, and then there should be some information out there so that people can have the information that they are wondering.
Brian, maybe that the question would be, just to maybe Beth's point, to kind of tie it all, is that, at what point does the building inspector, because he would have to certify a new construction for occupancy, right, the bleachers when they're, we're done? Would he be able, would he certify the bleacher occupancy if the bathroom is not completed? So is that, you know, is there a window or something like that? And that if, in the process of being built? And not, you know, or is it only when the whole project is?
Another, another question is, because some people, a lot of people have asked, why can't we just rent, having the, the rentals, you know, for the foreseeable future? And I wonder if there's a point at which the building inspector, the indoor, the state comes in and says, hey, wait a minute, now you've made this a permanent fixture. You know, you've turned the, the module, the modules into a permanent, so by default, you have to do all of the above.
Well, Mary, we, we wouldn't even be able to keep the current alumni bleachers there, like, that's the thing, we'd have to tear them down, and then we wouldn't have a press box, so.
We don't have the press box, and what does it do if we did use the temporary ones? What about the whole handicap accessibility?
Yeah, they're not ADA, they weren't ADA, and I think Mike looked into, he was getting some numbers, they'd have to rent platforms also with the bleachers as well. So it's actually what we, yeah, exactly, like, what they're doing now would not be sustainable for a long term, because it assumes that we would have the alumni bleachers retained with the press box. And that is not, I don't, personally, I think that's a safety issue, I wouldn't want to see that, I would want it to come down as soon as we can, you know?
But these are questions that people are asking, so if we can have that as part of our Q and A.
Like an FAQ, yeah, maybe an FAQ.
Yeah, we can have that as part of the FAQ.
And I'm, I'm with Elizabeth, we need to spend, just like the, the Green Meadow Elementary School, we're going to have to really spend some serious time doing focus.
Outreach.
Yeah, doing the outreach, because otherwise, waiting until the fall doesn't do a lot of good, so.
Yeah, especially.
Yeah.
You're sorry.
No, I was going to say, I do think that we should wait for the fall for that reason, so that we can educate people on how we got here.
Mauro, what do you have? Somebody? Waiting to the fall is, is it, speaking of safety, is it a, are we worried about the fact that those will be up longer? Because we can't demolish it until we start the project.
I, I don't like, I wanted to come, I wanted them to come down now, for me, the bleachers that were, they're, yeah, because, you know, they're a safety, it's a, it's a, they're already, that's why they're condemned. Somebody already got hurt, and they're a safety concern, so the longer we're prolonging this, there is going to become a point, it says, you know what? They have to come down regardless of, you know, the project moving forward or not. And so then that's, that's, that's what I think after the fall, that for me would be that decision point, like, okay, look, if the town's not going to approve money for the bleacher project in the fall, then I think as a school committee, I would want to revisit, like, the current, because we can't leave them up in their current condition. I think they're, you know, for much longer than that, I think that's just, it's a hazard, and people do go up there, and, you know, when we're not around. So, I don't know, Beth, that's what you're thinking?
Yeah, I'm just worried, yeah, it, it's another, I mean, the two risks we have if we wait, or one, it's going to cost us more money, we're going to end up coming in at the same size in the end, and then it's going to be more money because we waited, and the other risk is that someone gets hurt because we leave the bleachers up longer. So the, so the risks of waiting are those, I guess, the benefits of waiting are that we get to educate people about all the things that, you know, we, they need to know to understand why we have to do it this way.
The benefit also is that the educating will allow people to vote in favor of the project, so that they would actually, I think, I, I do worry that going before town meeting in the spring, it would not pass, and so we would, we would be almost redoing the same thing in the fall anyway.
It would allow them to vote accurately, at least, you know, they have more, they'd understand.
Right, they all, exactly, like, it's, I just feel like we're forcing the issue, if people express enough that they want more information. I don't know, Mauro, I know you were looking to.
Yeah, can somebody just explain to me the, the timeframe and why it is that there's not going to be designs in time for spring? I, I didn't understand that whole part.
So Huntress right now is working on, they've, on doing them, it takes time, I think it takes like two or three months from when they started. And that looks like it'll be towards the end of this month or sometime early next month, but the warrant articles, all of that are kind of, deadlines are earlier approaching, and CPC grant, they, they, CPC's expressed, you know, they want the numbers, more solid numbers than what they've received. So they would prob, they might not approve, you know, the application as it is, and then the, the other part is the, the ballot article. Like, the ballot is actually sooner than annual town meeting, so there were, there's more of a pressure to educate people on, and get it on the ballot, which they have their own deadlines, we're delaying, the ballot comes after special town meeting.
Okay, got it, thank you.
I don't know, Brian, if you had anything to add on that?
No, I think, that's, I think it's a pretty tight timeframe, and Mauro, to your point, the designs and whatnot aren't going to be ready until, you know, March, April, and they're voting in May, I don't know when everybody, you know, says like, well, we need more numbers. I think we actually have exactly what it costs, like, we know to do everything we've talked about, the bleachers, the bathrooms, the concession, the press box, da-da, it's 3.1. It's not 3.9, it's not 2.1, right? This isn't Greg guessing, this is really from Huntress with a pretty hard number, so I think we know the number, but there's absolutely value in making sure everybody understands why we need what we need, so that they understand bathrooms are a code issue. Not renting becomes an ADA issue, a good issue, if you will, to have them, so they are ADA compliant. And the press box supports our educational program, so I think there's definitely value in being able to have a very thorough FAQ. And so people can really look at that and understand why we're asking for what we're asking and why we need it. For the students from the school side, for the athletes, for the families, and for the town as a whole, to have a really nice place to play with bathrooms, concession, and somewhere to sit. That's all I wanted to say.
No, no, I think you're right, I don't think the numbers are going to change, I don't think that's the value, I think some people want to see them, but like, again, I don't think it's going to be, I'm, you know, I would love to see them go down, I'm not holding my breath. You know, because Huntress is the same company who gave us the first, you know, set of numbers. But I do think some of the educational, like, the, the code requirements, all that is usually laid out, I remember that being important in the, the green, when we did the roof before. So can I ask a question, and this is totally, actually, this, this falls under, would this project fall under the high school? Like, when I think about like maintenance or anything, you know that those, the, how much you spend in a certain period of time, we're putting in, how does that?
You mean?
Well, no, I know it's, Green Meadow is separate, it's a different building, but I just don't really fully understand the, how this construction, would it play a role in how much we're spending? Because it's part of the high school parcel. Is there any type of implication, that might be a separate, just being, being aware, if this is exempt from, you know, from those.
I'll look into that, I don't know off the top of my head, I will look into that.
I just wouldn't know if there's unintended, like, it might, might trigger, right, it might trigger something at the high school needing to get done, because it's on the same parcel. I don't know, I'm just, want to make sure that we've, you know, because it's a lot.
Yep, I will check into that.
Okay, I don't know if anyone has any other questions, or are we able, are we comfortable with proceeding with a vote?
I just have a couple more things that came up at the select board, there's a lot of asking about what happens after we build it. You know, we've been really focused on building it, and I think what I noticed about their questioning was a bit more like, once we have built it, what is the procedure then? So when we're thinking about the FAQ, we should really be thinking about things like, you know, is it going to be here all year? You know, who's in charge of maintaining it? Is it unlocked or locked, you know, during this or that sporting event? I don't, I think that if we're going to spend the time and to make sure we, that, that everyone has the education they need to understand what this, this process is, they need to understand the backend also, so.
Good point, and we've developed a maintenance plan for the school side of things, and I'll share that with Justin, so he's at least on, aware and wants to weigh in on what does that look like for the town side of things? Or Greg, I'm not sure exactly who decides what facilities are open and when, it's probably not Justin, but he's probably part of the conversation, how's that? And I agree, that would be a great part of the FAQ.
Anybody else have any other questions or?
I think one of the, just one other piece is that, this is a, how long, what are we talking, this is going to last 50 to 75 years, right? Is that what, what's the quote, yeah, so.
I think that, I don't, yeah.
That's another really important piece to keep getting out to people that, you know, this is a, this is like a school, you know, it's 50 to 75-year project that we do it, and we'll have to look at it again for a very long time.
Right. Anybody else? Okay, so it sounds like I'll go ahead and, and make a motion that we are, well, let me, I think I wrote this down somewhere, that we are, we are recommending to delay the proceeding of the Alumni Bleacher Project for, for funding until the fall special town meeting and the fall ballot, and to also delay approval for CPC application until that time.
Second? Go ahead.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Roll call, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Mauro Hogan?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Oh, myself, Natasha Rivera, yes, sorry. I was like, why am I not, I'm missing a person, sorry, it was myself. Okay, so I think that's it, Brian, if you want to, maybe if you could email Greg, just to let him know.
I'll email, yeah, I'll do that now, I'll email Phil and Greg and let them know.
And then also the other piece about the invoicing.
Yeah, I already emailed him about that, in between our meetings.
I, I'm not joking when I say we'll come down at town hall and understand whether, why these invoices are not being paid, because that's very.
I could let him know that.
Oh, good, good, thank you, it's important, I mean, I'm sorry, this is totally counterproductive. We're asking someone to do more work for us, and we can't even, all right, anyway.
Can I just ask a question about the whole CPC thing? So are we going to send them a note also, or still be at the February? Can I just ask a question about the whole CPC thing? So are we going to send them a note also or still be at the February twenty first? Meeting?
I'll say, I think we'll still need to go to that meeting. I don't know. They might say, you know, they'll delay it. Yeah, I have no idea. We just want, I'll send them an email to let them know that we're, you know, it did get brought up the last meeting that we would be considering it. So, yeah, I'll, I'll email the chairs of the FinCom and the CPC just to give them a heads up and. You know, Brian, thinking about meeting cadence, I know the meetings had paused at some point, but I think we still should. You know. Once Huntress is made whole, we should probably get the meeting cadence back on so we can still talk about revisiting a timeline. And what type of education opportunities that we, how we want to formulate the project for that, from that perspective. I don't want to lose time. You know.
Set that up.
Okay, okay, that would be, that would be great. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, I will go ahead and make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Natasha, yes. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.